Yeah, all right. So continue on with the zoning board of appeals agenda. We will reopen case number 892-59 Pleasant Street Properties, which is a continuation of the 40B project on Pleasant Street. So I think the applicant may have some new things to present and talk about. And then eventually we have a draft decision to go over some changes and things like that. But does the applicant want to start with anything?
Sure, there's a few minor things I think would be appropriate. And then I think procedurally, what I'll say is you should have received a set of drawings with the second revision, and then shortly after you should have got a set of drawings with a third revision. And the reason there was a delay in getting out the second revision is because that was the set of plans that was used to submit to conservation. Timing fell awkwardly on your submittal deadlines and a meeting, and then a hearing date, wanting to get input on a hearing date. So if any of those input items need to be illustrated on the plan, and all of a sudden, you know, a few weeks go by and Dan reminds me that, where are the R2 drawings? They're not on the website. He's like, oh, right. So I didn't want to issue R3 without having issued R2. There was very minimal changes in R2. So for example, the R2 drawings had some features that the fire department, some signage the fire department wanted. As you know, we moved the garage building. And I really think that's it. And then these R3 drawings reflect the cul-de-sac chambers, we have a full lighting plan, an updated landscape plan that is, you know, represents the updated layout. In other words, the garage relocation and conflicts with light poles, conflicts with the underground infiltration chambers for buildings one and two. So...
Okay, I'm going to stop you there.
Yep.
Because I'm confused. And Jeff, maybe you can help out a little bit.
Sure, sure.
So first of all, I've been carrying around two sets of plans. But you seem to indicate that in R2, didn't come out till just very recently.
Last week, when I gave you the two sets of plans, it was R2 and R3. They came out...
You gave us two sets of plans last week?
I did.
They were under your package for the other stuff she told you they were for you, but don't use them at last week's meeting.
Okay, okay. All right, all right, that's fine. So those are the R2s. So that's essentially set number three.
It was R2 and R3.
R2 and R3.
Were both given to you guys, yeah.
Last week.
It was in a packet, just like this, that...
Okay, all right.
And just, can we just clarify? R2 was received October 2nd, and R3 October 5th?
Yes. Well, yeah.
R3 was...
Well, R2 came in while I was gone.
That's why.
That's why. So it got stamped in with the town clerk, like it has to be legally. So it got stamped in by the time I was cleaning everything up on October 2nd, and then the other ones came in October 5th.
Okay, September 29th was the email from Steve.
Yes.
With R2.
And to your point, Mr. Chairman, the plans received October 5th, R3 are the latest and greatest.
Right, okay, okay.
I did not issue a letter, but I have reviewed them, and I'm prepared to discuss the...
Yeah, I think we need a new rule, 140B at a time.
I agree with that rule, you know.
New rule!
So much.
Yeah, because that's, there with the other...
Here, if you want to...
No, I don't need them right now. I don't need them right now. That's fine. I just, but I just wanted to kind of fully understand that. Okay, all right. So Steve, sorry, I needed to get my arms around that situation. So please, go ahead.
Okay, so there's a few plans, there's a few components. You know, this is probably a plan that fairly represents the revisions on R3, which obviously also illustrates the revisions on R2, but R3 is the latest. So, you know, officially, the garage had moved. We've got walkways that connect at the back of those buildings at the request of the fire department. We have a full lighting plan that shows lighting fixtures, photometrics, nothing spilling over the property line, a table up top of poles and pole heights and fixtures and specifications and model numbers. And then, of course, we have the full revised landscape plan illustrative of things like the connecting walkways in the back, the relocated garage, considerations for planting too close to infiltration chambers and light poles. But that's really the crux of it. Again, there were some fire department signs about no parking around the outer edge. Those are on R2 and R3. Visitor parking next to the leasing office, those are on R2 and R3. I think that sums it up. So it was more of a, a little more than a housekeeping, but it was essentially a housekeeping exercise to make sure that we were just trying to capture everything. We'd like to get as close to final plans as we can because we were so close. And that's what we did. We were holding off potentially as long as we could for any discussions regarding waivers. But I think we were able to capture everything on what is known as the revision 3R3 plan set.
Okay, any questions or comments from the ZBA?
Two dumpsters?
Yep. Yep, the dumpster on this side of the project and one on this side of the project.
How do you, how many dumpsters? I mean, 50 units to a dumpster, I take it.
So, yeah, I mean...
Is there a calculation for that?
There's room.
For yachting size? I'm just curious.
I'm sure the trash company knows that calculation. I was just going to give you a measurement. But I do know that width-wise, there's room for, what do we figure, 15, 20 yard dumpsters in each location, plus room on the side for recycling totes and things of that nature.
That's right. You're required to do that. I know the rubbish company is probably required to recycle.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's going to be something that a lot of tenants would want.
Right.
Yep.
Other questions, comments from ZBA? All right, so I have a question. I was thinking Mr. Yeomans would bring this up, but we talked about the rainwater on the two back buildings, and I think you agreed to do a similar capture system that you're doing on the first two buildings. Did I hear that right? Is that in there?
Well, I think he agreed to look at it. I don't know, but I'll speak for you, Chad. And, you know, we did, we talked about it, we looked at it. I think we just came to the same conclusion that we came to during the meeting, that these infiltration chambers would be so close to the recharge that's occurring in these surface basins. Jeff and I even had a conversation about it, and I won't speak for Jeff. I'll let him, you know, if the board would like to hear what he has to say, I'll let him...
All right, so you looked at it and decided, no, and we're going to stick with what you've got, what you've done.
Okay, that's our position.
Right. Mr. Yeomans?
I'd like to hear Jeff's opinion on that. And again, before you speak, my previous comments were, you know, I'm thankful for the two, but I think the aquifer will benefit from all four buildings draining immediately down into the aquifer and not collecting through the onsite drainage system into the, I have to say, a well-designed, you know, plan to catch that waste of that storm water. So, you know, I'm still of the school, Jeff, that there's a better impact on the aquifer considering that this is a highly porous soil, as Steve had mentioned at the conservation department, that it accepts the rainwater quickly. And I think that that aquifer for the Grattan Water District will benefit from all four, not just two, immediately going down into that soil. So I offer you the floor.
Okay, thank you very much. For the record, I'm Jeff Walsh with Graves Engineering, the ZBA's engineering consultant. Duly noted, Mr. Yeomans, what, when I dropped this issue or presented this issue a couple meetings back, it was the thought of decentralizing infiltration on the site. And I felt that there was an ability to do something along the lines of what they did. We spoke of all the buildings or many of the buildings at that time. But my, where I stand with this is before the roof recharge systems were added to the plan set, the hydrology, the storm water, the hydrology calculations and the storm water management report do, first of all, we reviewed them in detail, the input, the output. We can glean from the calculations not just peak rates of runoff from the site, but also volumes of runoff that occur over the duration of the storm, not peak volumes, that's the total volume over a storm. And the hydrology calculations and what they had proposed with the open basins showed that there was actually a net reduction of surface water runoff from the developed project compared to existing conditions today. Now, that assumes everything works properly. For example, the open infiltration basins are not blinded to the point that they infiltrate groundwater slower than the rate modeled. And I might add, the rate modeled was based upon what I feel are conservatively slow rates. In many cases, you might actually see faster rates, but nevertheless, we use standardized procedures that Mass DP has published. Unless somebody wants to go out and spend a bunch of money doing soil testing, in which case you do what's called permeability testing, you take the slowest rate, you divide it by two, and that's the number you're allowed to use. It can be a more aggressive rate. But nevertheless, they used standardized methodology with their storm water management, and in gleaning the information, there was a net reduction in surface water runoff, hence an increase in recharge with just the open basins. But nevertheless, you know, I'm on the conservative side. I hate to put all my eggs in one basket if they can have another basket. And my thinking was that by decentralizing and adding some infiltration somewhere else on the site, and that's the reason I presented to the board, there'd also be a second basket in that if the open infiltration basins didn't work as well as they did, there's two other subsurface recharge systems. In this case, that they have proposed those additional recharge system, whether it's two or a different number, it's another place, it's another basket, if you will, it's another place to recharge groundwater on the site. And that, the numbers associated with that have not been added into the storm water report, nor would it be any kind of meaningful information as far as evaluating peak rates of runoff from the site. However, I can tell you, in the calculations they did present, that would take at least a one-year storm, if not a two-year storm, from the roof of each of those two buildings and completely discharge it to the ground without any overflow. That was substantial. My intention was not to go after big storms, but to keep the very frequent small storms, recharge those. And this certainly does it for the two buildings. I'd like to summarize by saying, again, you know, the calculations showed a net reduction in surface water runoff before these two were added. It's even more of a reduction. Yes, there would even be more benefit to adding more storm water to the subsurface if more buildings did have recharge systems. I don't dispute that whatsoever. Would it be a benefit to the aquifer? Probably so, especially clean roofer enough. Did they at least mimic, if not in theory, improve conditions by reducing the runoff? The data says yes. And on top of it all, there was a decentralization of infiltration by way of adding runoff in these two buildings that are farthest away from the open infiltration basins. And at the front of the site, there will still be a continuation of some recharge in the low areas with the, the low areas on both sides of the driveway. On one side of the driveway, there's a low area that receives the runoff from across the street by way of the drainage system. And in the other low area, it's graded to drain dry, but it's a pretty shallow slope, so there will be some infiltration there. So in short, I can't provide any engineering information or data to show that there really would be a substantial benefit by doing more. As much as I'd like to try to support the position that you have, it comes down to opinion. My thought, it comes down to opinion as to how much is enough. I just can't support it with any additional data.
Do you?
Brian, go ahead.
Do you know the percentage of increased infiltration compared to current conditions?
I could look it up. I don't remember the number. I've got it in some notes from our first review this back at the office. I wouldn't, I'd be speculating if I tried to remember. It was, I was surprised that they were able to achieve what they achieved, and I was very happy with what they achieved.
I think that's good enough answer.
Okay, thank you.
Respecting what Jeff has said as a professional engineer, and to Steve as well, my observation is strictly based on a non-professional status. And I look at this project that is presently a porous field, and we're putting 2.4 football fields of impervious surface on it, and I've stated that before. So I'm, I feel that the other two buildings should have the subsurface infiltration systems, considering that when I look at 2.4 football fields now over this very porous building lot, that it deserves that kind of protection. So, and rather than beat the issue to death, Mr. McCusker, perhaps I can make a motion and we just decide as a board whether we want to pursue that.
We could, but hold tight for a minute, why not? So Jeff, you weren't here at the last meeting, but...
No, I wasn't.
I did kind of present it, I went through it and how I think of it. Again, I'm not an engineer, you know. And my understanding is that the two buildings in the back, I mean, discharging their water directly into the basins, and from there, they go down into the ground. And the concern, the difference is if they went into some sort of underground structures, they wouldn't be going into the basin and down to the ground, they just go straight into these structures, down into the ground, to the aquifer. Now, because they're going into these basins, they would be mixing with other surface water that's been captured throughout the project. There was some discussion, I think, of like an 80% clean, was that the number, or something like 80%?
Yeah, that'd be standard, but we're actually more than 90 because of local storm.
Oh, yeah, all right. So 90%, I don't know if clean is the right word, but gets dumped in there, and now the water's mixed together, but it still is going straight down into the ground. So the way I looked at it was from the point of view of diminishing returns. And I just, one of you can maybe talk to that at all. I mean, it just seems like we'd be asking the applicant to go through some significant expense for not very much gain. And I'm not asking you to quantify that in any way, but am I thinking about it in the right...
Your reasoning is on cue with the way the calculations work. Yep. There gets to be diminishing returns, especially, we're talking recharge, but with respect to water quality, adding another treatment device in the line of drainage system, there is diminishing return each time. So with that, you know, it's, with the water, the roof runoff mixing, in theory, the, well, they do, to the best of my recollection, they didn't ask for a waiver from the local storm water standard that's normally administered by the commission that requires 80% total suspended solids removal before the water even enters the infiltration basin.
And that's what Steve was saying, you're at 93.
Yep. Okay, yep. Now, sitting here, I'm listening to Mr. Yeomans and listening to the board. I'd like to offer a potential middle road that perhaps the board and the applicant may want to even talk about, maybe not. For the two roof recharge systems on the building number 300 and number 400, they're proposed to have piping come out the back of the building and discharge directly over toward the, right into each of the two infiltration basins. What page are you on, Jeff?
I'm on sheet number C5.0. So you're looking at...
Want that film to look at?
No, I'm looking right at that one.
Which buildings?
Number 300 and number 400.
Yep. On the right side of each building, there's a dashed line, yep, runs under the sidewalk with the letters RD. Yep, those are roof drains. Those are solid pipes meant to convey storm water from the downspouts directly into the infiltration basin. My thought is perhaps rather than use solid pipes...
Perforated.
Perforate a pipe with some stone around them. Avoid the chambers, let the water be conveyed through these types of systems, but yet through the small storm events, you get the benefit of a significant amount of infiltration through those types of...
How big is that pipe?
Same size diameter as what they're proposing. The difference, it would be perforated.
I mean, is it four or six?
No, this, I don't know offhand.
12 because of the ties of the roof, I believe.
12, is it really?
Yeah, it's a good...
Good 12. It's probably at least...
Eight would be minimum, but I think, I believe it's 12.
But you can get it imperforated, correct?
Yep. To the best of my knowledge, it's roughly the same money. And bedding material needs to be purchased for the pipe or used for the pipe anyways. They might have the benefit with this site of using onsite native materials, the bedding material, because that is one type of material that's allowable with HDB pipe. So it might be a little bit of purchased stone or stone generated at one of their facilities would be the added cost. The excavation's the same, there's no cost with chambers. But it's, you know, I think it's middle ground. I don't know what the...
So in that situation, probably your average storms, your, you know, your typical storms, probably that water never even makes it to the basins. That water goes through the perforation and is, and then it's just the really big storms that some would get into the basins.
Correct, correct.
It's not worthy of running the numbers or anything like that on it, but it's...
I mean, that seems like a better way to do it. Any comment?
I think it's a great idea. My only thought is that we would just probably like the sections directly coming off the building to be solid pipe so that we get that water away from the building. But then, you know, then this main trunk line, you know, here, and the section going to the basin on this one can be perforated, main trunk line, and the section going to the basin can be perforated.
Yep. And I wouldn't even be opposed to the section going to the basin being solid, so thereby it's almost like a leaching trench, and then you've got the gravel material up high, which is not as porous as the pervia, as the stone, and it kind of contains the water within the, within the trench.
I think it's an excellent idea. Minimal...
What you're describing is, it effectively adds one more building in the flow from that one, oh, two buildings, okay. Yeah, I mean, that accomplishes, along with the two subsurface systems for the two buildings as proposed, that this would allow roof drainage from the two rear buildings to dissipate directly into the soil to a greater extent.
Agreed.
And I always think of it, if I were looking for water to make ice cubes for a nice drink of scotch, I would go to the first two buildings to get my water rather than the rear. So that's, you know, I'm amenable to that, and I appreciate if you all would do that. I focused a lot of my time on looking at this, you know, wellhead protection area. And you're making a big investment in that as well for the 104 tenants who are going to be in that building. And, you know, I, from day one, I've looked at it. As soon as I became more aware of it and looked into it more closely, I just felt that, I've expressed my views on it.
Well, thank you, Bill. And this member, you know, is appreciative, even though I may not have spoken consistent with your views, I am very, this member is very appreciative of the effort you put into it, because it is a very important topic, and, you know, I think the entire town benefits from the effort that you put into this. You know, we're all, you know, we're all dependent on aquifer. So, you know, this member appreciates the effort that you put into it. I think we have a reasonable solution way forward at this point. The applicant's, you know, kind of indicating it should be, you know, fairly easy and straightforward to do. So let's just plan on that being the solution here, and we can move on.
I won't.
Yep, Mr. Adams?
Where's the recharge areas on buildings 100 and 200?
You can see those four.
And they're pretty sizable chambers.
Yeah, one, two, three, four. So two, two areas per building, and each area consists of the largest chamber that the manufacturer makes, which is four feet tall and six and a half feet wide. You can kind of see what they look like.
And then do those drain, do those, if they fill, do they...
So when they fill, they overflow into the closed pipe drainage system.
Okay.
I gotta have you show.
Yep.
This is the new set, too. Where is it on this? Put a little dot.
Oh, so R3 would have them.
Oh, this isn't R3?
That's R2.
This is the ones we got?
Yep, that's R2.
I can show you on this one.
Oh, that's why.
I got my scale.
These are the ones I, we got on the fifth.
Because I dated them.
I gave both sets, so I don't...
Peter, what's the revision date on yours or the revision number on the right side in the title block?
Two, I just looked.
Okay, thank you.
Eight, eight...
Here, Peter, I've got another set for you.
I've got...
Oh, okay, yeah, I don't have that. That's why I asked. I was looking for it. Actually, I was looking at those to see where they could go on the other two buildings and...
Right, trying to get, you know, proportion, proportional size. It's actually an easy condition to write, too.
I have those dots, Peter.
There you go, Peter.
Oh, that's a new set?
That's an R3, yep.
Okay, that's, I can keep them?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll get rid of these. I'll confuse myself even more.
Are you good at this point, Mr. Adams?
Yep, I'm fine, thank you.
All right. Any other comments or thoughts from the board? Steve, do you have anything else, or...
Nope, I don't believe I do. You guys have anything?
Other than the suburban fire department stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, do you just want to go over that? I mean, that's so, yeah, let's talk through those two things.
Yep, sounds good. So you should have received correspondence that we received from the fire department acknowledging our offer of these special mobility chairs, but they just, they declined, and they were otherwise satisfied with what the plans had illustrated by connecting the back two walkways. So we, you know, a lot of effort was made and considerations were thought of, but I think at the end of the day, they just thought...
Yep.
What had been done on the plans to date, especially connecting those back walkways, was adequate. And then earlier today, we received a sewer capacity memo from the town's consultant, CDM Smith. It's... It's, uh, it's not a dramatically long memo, but the conclusions that were drawn indicate that in multiple scenarios, specifically the scenario where we are pumping, there is adequate capacity to convey existing peak sewer flows into the town system from this location to the plant.
That's how they concluded. They don't say how many more units could be added in that area or anything like that.
They don't talk about units, they talk about the million gallons of day flow. So for example, the, the pipe capacity of the analyzed sewer mains, which are from our site to the plant, range from one point three million gallons a day to four million gallons a day. Talk about that existing capacity.
So, um, all right, so just refresh my mind here and, um, I'm looking at this picture that was in the memo.
Yep.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but right now, today, they're pumping from the bottom of Christopher up Pleasant?
No, that's gravity.
Oh, that's gravity.
Yep, everything, only thing that's currently being pumped is the homes from Peter Way have a small pump station in the cul-de-sac and that gets pumped up Peter's Way in the shoulder of Pleasant Street to the manhole at the bottom of Christopher Drive.
Okay, all right.
And then from there, I believe all, all the way to the plant is gravity.
Okay.
You're tying into the same manhole.
And we are tying into the same manhole. Yep, we'll have a pump station, yep, you know, in this vicinity of the site. We're going to run the force main and tie into the same manhole.
Okay, so your pump station is really just for your onsite, all right, then it is gravity from there.
Yep.
Is there significance to the yellow in this diagram then?
It typically indicates pipe size, but I don't see a legend. That was the first thing I looked for when I was reading it.
All right. All right, I just need to get on the same page here.
Yep.
Okay. So, I mean, the conclusion is there is enough capacity. Of course, that could be a showstopper if there wasn't. Um, so we should be in, you should be in good shape at this point moving forward from that. Anything else we need to talk about on this?
Not that comes to mind.
Any questions or thoughts from the board? Okay. So I, I think you guys got anything else? So I think next up would be to discuss, um, the draft decision, but actually before we get there, I don't know if anyone in the audience has anything to say. Do we have anyone on, um?
No, there's nobody.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, with respect to review of, um, plans set R three, I did that today. I did not issue a letter. I was tasked with reviewing it for consistency with the previous plans and to capturing anything that was recently discussed. I'm satisfied with the plans, I have no issues, I don't think anything was missed.
Okay. Will, will you be, issue a-
I would be glad to.
Yeah, I think that would be the appropriate thing, right?
Yep.
Have you reviewed the R two plans?
I, I did with respect, I did two, I have two review letters I issued and I, R two, if that came out August first, I may not have, I don't remember when my letters came out, quite frankly.
Yeah, you don't have a formal letter for the second revision.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought. But I did have a memo, an email or two that came out with respect to the recharge systems that were offered about the time the R two plan set came out, or shortly thereafter, the R two plan set came out.
So it does seem like we should then have a letter that probably addresses R two and R three.
Yep. Yeah, what, what I'd like to do, if you don't mind, is continue the, uh, the customary work with the letter and just reference, um, everything that I've received since that time and-
Yep, I think that works.
Okay, yep.
At some point, we end up with a letter to basis that everything's-
Yes.
Good.
And it points back to R three, which I suspect the board may be using as a basis of a comprehensive permit decision.
Right. Obviously, if we end up with an R four, then-
We'll, we'll take care of the paperwork.
Yep, okay. All right. Before we get to actually the decision, anything else from anyone? All right, so Dan, can I turn it over to you and, and you are on mute right now?
Sure. So, uh, I, I apologize for getting this draft too late. Um, I, I'd hoped to get it done sooner. There weren't a lot of substantive changes, um, so I don't know what version Katrina has up, if that's the red line version or the clean version.
I have the clean one, but I can pull up the red line, whatever you guys want to see.
I, I would think it'd be easier to go through the red lines, right, Dan?
Okay.
Yeah, because that way we can just focus on the changes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And these are red lines to your first draft?
Yeah, from the, from the very first draft. So I made some changes during the meeting on September twenty-first, but you, you guys haven't seen that draft and so I just continued the red lines. Um, so they're, they're from the original draft that was circulated on September twentieth.
Yep.
But this draft started with you, Dan, or from the applicant?
From me.
Okay.
But I, I think the applicant had you as input, I mean, I-
Yeah, we, we, we did a rough draft and, and provided to Dan and then Dan worked his magic. That's right.
So I guess, yeah, Katrina, you can just scroll down. Um, so I think for A two, I don't, I don't think we actually have any changes there and Jeff can correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, I'll, I actually added some language just now to, on the roof drain issue and I, I stuck that under the stormwater section. So unless Jeff has any additional edits or comments to make to the plans, I, I think that A two could probably just come out.
I have nothing else to add it, Dan, except for what we discussed tonight, but you've already captured that.
All right. So you can scroll down. The, uh, the, I think the most revised, I think the most current revision date of the plan set is August twenty-second. Um, but there were, as Steve mentioned, four, four additional sheets that were modified on September twenty-sixth. Um, and those are the, the four landscaping sheets, so if, if I'm wrong, please let me know. But I, I, that's, that's the last set of plans that I have, is, is the ones that are dated August twenty-second.
Yeah, that's correct, Dan, and I think this is kind of always a struggle sometimes and you have a consultant like a landscape architect and they're going to issue their plans and they issue them and, you know, sometimes we try to coordinate and say, hey, put a revision date of such and such so it matches the rest of the plans, but in their case, they only had two revisions. Excuse me. So what we thought made sense would be potentially, I've seen this before, is we'll just list the drawings in the plan set, maybe in this part of the decision, and then each drawing would have whatever its most revised date was, either, either original date and most revised date. Uh, that's just one thought that I had, but, um, whatever the board's pleasure is, you know, or your recommendation, Dan.
Okay. So I think this works. Section A eleven just itemizes the plans, I, I think we've got them all in there now. So you can scroll down, Katrina. In second, condition A twelve, I, I added the, the table, which is the breakdown of the units by income level and bedroom. Um, I think somebody wanted that to be in the decision at, at the last meeting, so that's now there. And we took out that section at the last meeting. So, um, under section C seven is the hours of operation. So I went back and looked at what we did for Fisherville in the MOU that we signed with that developer. Um, and we tightened up this language from our boilerplate language and this is, this is what it says. So if you folks are comfortable with this, I think this covers kind of the issues that we've had in the past with Fisherville, that trucks and deliveries were arriving before seven AM. So we've got that language in here. But you also did, um, liberalize the hours of operation for Saturdays, making it capable of starting at seven and not just eight, uh, which had been the time in, in previous decisions.
Do we have to have Massachusetts state holidays in there?
No, it's up to you. We've had that in the past, but that's up to you.
Right, just because we have so many of them.
Yeah, Peter, I, I, in my opinion, I, I think we do need to, to keep them in there because this is a residential area.
Patriots Day?
Yeah.
Are you serious?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's a day off from school. It's a residential area. It's a residential area and, and I think that we owe it to the, to the people of that neighborhood to, um, you know, if, if, you know, if they have a day off and they're able to sleep in and, you know, I think, I, I, I just think that because it's residential and, and it's, you know, it's surrounded, well, these two sides are pretty heavily surrounded, although that neighborhood in Sunrise isn't far away in the back. Um, so I, I, I think we have to, I think we have to stick with it. That's my opinion, this, this member's opinion, we certainly could vote on it as a board, but-
I don't think Eastland works on Patriots Day anyway.
I, I don't mean Pa, but I'm not just saying Patriots Day, but there's a lot of-
There is.
I mean, we're getting new federal holidays, this thing is going crazy. Pretty, pretty soon it's going to be, how many days do you want to work every year? I don't mind taking-
I already have that answer.
Starts with the letter Z.
And there are a couple of holidays that are, what, Essex County, like evacuation day, there's two of them. When I worked for the state, there was two holidays we got up in Lowell, even though they were Essex County days. I forget which ones they are.
Evacuation day, what's that, is that Bunker Hill Day?
Yes, it is. I believe so.
That should be, because that's my birthday.
Maybe, maybe that thing was a fact. Anyways, Patriot State, to the best of my recollection, is a state holiday recognized throughout the state, yeah.
Yeah.
And our office works.
Sorry, Jeff.
Sorry.
So if I may, I, I think in anticipation of this topic being discussed potentially at length, we actually looked at the Fisherville condition and I don't think we really had any issue except the last sentence. You know, no vehicles, personal or otherwise shall arrive. And I, I think when it comes to starting equipment, but, you know, for, for the, the project superintendent, the excavator operator, the bulldozer operator showing up and being ready to work at seven, as opposed to being able to show up at seven, you know, obviously no parking on Pleasant Street, no parking on Peter's Way, no parking on Christopher Drive. And I, you know, I, I know the problems you had at Fisherville. You know, my suggestion to the applicant was that I didn't think they should be penalized for what another project did and obviously you'd have a lot of enforcement in this issue, but we've got a good track record. I think really just the sticking point would be personnel. You know, an excavator operator shows up in his Toyota Camry, pulls on the site into a designated parking area, certainly no equipment is starting up.
Yeah, so, all right, so the Toyota Camry is not the issue, right? It's, you know, I'm going to go from my own personal experience, I was a tin knocker. I show up in my truck and now I can't start working, but that's mainly can't unload the truck, right? So now I'm unloading ten into the building. That's a lot as hell.
Yeah, I would consider that work, but I know what you're saying.
Yeah. No, I totally agree.
So, you know, maybe we tweak this a little bit along the lines of, to say something like no unloading or something along those lines, maybe if you're going to show up and sit in your truck, fine. You know, but, you know, no work, obviously no work, we don't want the heavy equipment starting up, but even unloading stuff.
Yeah.
And I, I can tell you right now, I mean, I, you know, we had jobs and we couldn't start till a certain time, but jeez, I certainly could get the truck over there, back up to the building, unload stuff and get, you know, kind of get ready to start working.
Yep.
And if it's, and if it's ductwork, it's noisy.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, sure, absolutely. Yeah, I don't think we, so I don't object to that.
So I, Dan, I don't know if you have any ideas on how to kind of maybe tweak the language.
Wasn't one of the issues at Fisherville, wasn't one of the Fisherville issues that there were trucks coming like at six thirty and just idling? And, and I thought it was more than just pickup trucks. I, I thought there was like delivery trucks or, or, or equipment that were, that were starting at, where, where, equipment that was idling.
Or it was having trucks backing up, I think.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely.
There was, there was trucks showing up idling, there were, they were standing outside slamming car doors and talking loudly.
I think the skitters and everything, the tree cutters were there, it's quite a pass six, that's what I heard.
Did we have, and you guys, I'm sure know the answer to this, but has this been an issue with other projects besides Fisherville?
We had a couple of complaints of Sotier at Craftsman Court, but that was, but they were minor. It was a couple of the subs of a sub showing up and we called Sotier and it got stalked immediately. So Fisherville's been the only one in the thirteen years I've been here that we've had an issue with. We had no complaints when they were building Elmerock. So, I mean, I, we've, that's been, because I usually, I get all the calls and I get all the complaints that get sent to me.
The complaints I hear most frequently is paving crews that when the equipment gets moved in at six in the morning or five thirty in the morning, moved out late, late at night, but usually the complaints are in the morning.
The other component for the applicant is, um, they probably control eighty or more percent of all the individuals that'll be on the site. You know, they're, they're a fully equipped development and construction company, so, you know, they're not hiring a site contractor. They are the site contractor. You know, they have their own framing crews, they actually have their own foundation crews. So unlike a lot of other projects where it's subcontracted, subs to those subs and it's hard to kind of keep them all on a leash, that's, uh, not the case here, I hope that, uh-
Yeah, sometimes that's the direct line of communication is very helpful because all of our people are in-house, especially the excavator operators, which will, you know, is the real noisy stuff. Uh, so we're pretty well versed with that. We had a prior case before then, um, wanted to lock the gate, nobody wanted to come in. But I've got probably a hundred and twenty-five people come to a construction site and what they were doing, they would be doing laps until the gate was done. So I'm sure people on Christopher Drive doesn't want everybody hanging out or just doing laps on Pleasant Street. So I think if we can put a couple, uh, you know, additional things on the verbiage in there, we can live with, you know, like power tools or any, no power tools or anything after, you know, seven AM. You know, just kind of site clearing or land clearing or, you know, heavy, heavy construction or power tools by seven. You know, I'm, I'm totally amenable to that. I, I don't want to wake everybody up on, on the other, uh, road as well. I can't control, I can't say nobody's allowed on the site until seven, that's just a mass ca, you know, that's just chaos.
Um, and, and I get that and I also, you know, I, I know at Fisherville, what they were doing is they just found a parking lot down the road that they're all hanging out at, so really just kind of move the problem down the road. You know, so, so I kind of get that. It, it, it might be more effective if we have a sentence that says, you know, so I, I've written down here, and it's not necessarily in a particular order, but, you know, no vehicle unloading, no vehicle idling, um, you know, Chad said power tools, I, you know, in my mind, it's power, it's tools, power or otherwise. You know, it could be just some things like that that just, you know, i- i- if you're going to be there, fine, you know, no noise.
Yeah. I mean, people having coffee or whatnot until, you know, they get there ten minutes early, but-
Yeah.
They're not, uh, going for a miter saw at, you know, six fifty-five, I mean, it's strictly seven.
Yeah. What, what do you think, Dan?
Yeah, it, it's kind of hard to predict all these different things that could happen and that, that's why it's so much easier just to say no one on site, but if, if, if that's not practical, then, you know, I think we can just brainstorm and come up with essentially the laundry list of things that we think could happen, such as vehicle idling, uh, unloading of vehicles, um, use of equipment, um, backup alarms, excessive noise from, you know, people talking. I, I, I don't know, I'm just kind of thinking out loud.
No, I, 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 I think, and I think that would probably be more effective, quite frankly. I mean, I get what you're saying, you know, no vehicles, this, you know, kind of simplifies it. But, you know, I think that just pushes the problem down the road. They're just, you know, they're going to go down to, you know, one of the other roads down the road and they're going to hang out there until seven o'clock and then, and then, you know, head on down to the project.
What if we just say something like, you know, the intent is to have no noise disturbance before seven AM, including, but not limited to these things? But I, I think that, you know, that's-
Yeah.
But we're not going to be able to legislate every-
Right, right.
Possible thing.
Dan, you, you, you want to take a shot at a, a sentence?
Yeah, I, let me, let me work on this.
Okay.
Um, I'll wordsmith it, I, I know what the board wants, so.
Yep. Okay. I, I think we just, you know, I, I, really, what we want is something there so that if there is a problem, we can- Yep, okay, I I think we just, you know, I I really, what we want is something there so that if there is a problem, we can. You know, Bob Burga can go out and and have a conversation with him and, you know, correct it.
If if I may, um, I agree with you, Brian, I was headed in the same direction, open it up with, this is the intent. And then, for example, so.
Yep.
The other thing I wanted to at least make the board aware of is is, you know, my days as an excavator operator, um. Yeah, I had to get the fi- machine fired up, warmed up in cold weather for about ten minutes or so and grease before I go to work and. And when does that occur, before seven AM or after seven AM, I mean, I had to have the machine up and ready to go at seven AM, so it warmed up about ten minutes or so. And.
And 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 the intention is no.
I just, that's gonna be a real.
Grease it cuz that's quiet.
Yep.
But I I would fire it up and and I've gotta move certain things, certain ways, and I've it's gonna be.
The intention is no.
That.
And we understand that, we understand that, that wouldn't happen, but if you don't show up till seven, then you don't start it until seven fifteen and then it's seven thirty.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
You know, it just kinda snowballs and the reality is actually extends the construction duration, it might not seem like a lot, but. You know, extends the construction duration, so instead of something being done a certain time period, it can be, takes a little bit longer and everyone's wondering what's taking so long. It's it's not drastic in this situation, but, you know, it's it's a real thing.
When when I subbed as a uh, with a piece of equipment for somebody, I was supposed to be running at seven. When I worked on their payroll, running their machine, you walked up to the machine at seven. Not serious.
Well, that's, I mean, that's how it usually is on, you know, most of our sides, I mean, that's the reality, Peter.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
You know, if it it's gonna cost me another ten or fifteen minutes to for this, I I I'll adhere to the.
No, nobody that's on your payroll is gonna grease your machine for nothing on their own time.
I'm paying for it, so, and that's a cost to me, so.
Okay, alright, I think I think we've uh, I think we have an idea where we wanna go there.
These are all edits that we made at the last meeting.
Alright, so where are we now?
D, section D, open space wetlands, page eleven.
Yep, got it. Alright.
Yep, keep going.
And then D four.
Yeah, we we made that change at the meeting. Alright, so D seven uh, is new, um, someone asked me to draft a phosphorus condition. Um, so I I did, I did some quick research to see if there's any other, if any towns had phosphorus bylaws. Or nitrogen bylaws, and the 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 issue here is, of course, just the water supply and and a pond that's um, close to the project. Um, so this is language that came from a bylaw that I found at Orleans. And then I just tweaked it and and massaged it to to make it work for as a condition.
I think during, oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I think during the last couple of meetings, I I I think I was the one who said I would do that, but I didn't use the word no. I used the word low, uh, low phosphorus and low nitrogen. Uh, I know, and someone you might have bought fertilizer before and it's usually the 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 three digits, you can see those fancy numbers. And low phosph- phosphorus, low nitrogen are usually the single digits. Um, and I did the same thing as Mr. Hill, of course, and there are these products uh, out there that are actually earth friendly fertilizers. Such as uh, Alorganite, and they're not totally nitrogen free, they're low nitrogen, low phosphorus. Um, and uh, potassium as well, so there are fertilizers, so I I'd I'd rather have it, say, low. Um, uh, nitrogen and phosphorus fertilizers.
The problem with using the term low is that it, it it's like light beer, I mean, I I drink light beer, but I still get a beer belly, so it's, you gotta.
Well, then perhaps perhaps you should look at the calories. Low fertilizer, I was saying that, it's the low numbers, uh.
Can we define that somehow?
But yeah, it needs to be defined.
It's single, single digits is defined as, in my case, there's double digits means it's high, low phosphorus is single digits.
Di- digits of what?
That's how the, that's the ranking of fertilizer, if you went to the fertilizer store, you'd see, uh, you know, scots or something, there's three numbers. Usually the higher numbers are the higher amounts, uh, low, I would say would be in the single digits, of course. Perhaps somebody else might know fertilizer in here as well, but that that that's all, I'd rather not just say no.
The three digits recommend phosphorus, nitrogen and um.
Potassium.
Potassium.
Yep, and and the thing of it is, is plants need nitrogen, potassium and phosphine to thrive and to survive, and that's the reason for fertilizing. It's not, to put down fertilizer that doesn't have those is, you might as well not put fertilizer down and good luck with the vegetation. But the point is, it's how much fertilizer, how much nitrogen is applied, not how much fertilizer, but the concentration versus the application rate. Um.
And I think the the duration of the release.
Agreed, 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 the the, I think the point is to limit nitrogen phosphorus only to the extent necessary. To make the vegetation grow or maintain, be maintained, and that's it, I just don't know how to word it.
Um, so, you know, my thinking on something like this is, I'd like to get some input from the conservation agent or, you know, I'd say CONCOM, but. Um, at the very least, the conservation agent, I mean, this is really their domain. And and they're the ones who should be really providing this input, we, you know, it's our job to take this sort of information from all of the various boards, et cetera, in town. Um, so I'm wondering, you know, Katrina, if you could maybe reach out to our conservation agent.
I'll reach out to them.
And and say, you know, we we would like to do something, um, you know, to 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 basically say we want, you know, only. I guess low nitrogen, low phosphorus, whatever, you know, we don't, we don't wanna say he can't fertilize the premises.
Okay.
I don't think we, I don't think we wanna say that, so, you know, do they have some language or they have some recommendations, I mean. I don't know, in my opinion, it's kinda their job to 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 do that, not not necessarily, you know.
I'll reach out to her.
Anyone, you know, does that make sense?
Yeah, to have them in, or perhaps have in the the expertise that we had in looking at the water. I mean, you know, we spent, the town spent fifty million plus, you know, on the uh. On the upgrade to the sewer treatment plant, the wastewater plant, to remove phosphorus and nitrogen. To because they they the the federal government dictate a lower number. So, you know, I think, I think to have someone else look at that and to, and again, knowing that. The the applicant has to provide, you know, safe environments for the people living there. And when you plant, you know, and make the investment in landscaping, you don't want it to die.
Right, right.
You know, so.
Yeah, we don't wanna be barren, um.
I have an idea. The app, uh, something along the lines of this, um, start the condition with the applicant shall apply fertilizers. Only to the extent necessary to germinate and then maintain. Um, permanent vegetative cover and landscaping. Without, I'm trying to avoid saying you can only use so many pounds per square foot, so ma- uh, ten, 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 five, five, five or whatever in the nitrogen. Trying to allow the board the liberty to, okay. We get, we're concerned here, and two years down the road, we're concerned whoever the enforcing person is could say, take that condition. What's normally applied and then go to the operator of the facility and say, what has your landscaper been applying and compare the same. I, the landscaping company that I got, they don't mow, they just apply fertilizer, cuz I couldn't do it often enough, I get a printout every time, what they applied. How many ounces of this, how many pounds of that? The, my point is the data may be available to the developer if they hire out that, and then the condition allows reasonable. So the enforcement person, whoever that is, can say, okay, what's reasonable here and what have they been applying? And it doesn't burden the board, we try to come up with, ah, you can't have more than ten, 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 or you, or 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 what's, what's the definition of low or something to that effect.
No, I I think that's a valid point, I I still like, I would like to get, you know, the professionals who's who's really, it's it's their domain. They're the ones who should be most concerned about this, that's their job, I I would like to get their input on this, um.
Bill Per- if I may?
Yeah.
Uh, perhaps a discussion between the professionals that that we seek. And your landscape architect, you know, could have that discussion to come up with something that is. Amenable to your objectives and to the towns, you know, I look at this and, you know, you're gonna have. A hundred and four people living, you know, in there, over, you know, in this, you know, in this facility. So you have to provide safety and you have to make it look good and, you know, so where's that common ground? You know.
No, absolutely, I'm I'm very sensitive to it, to, I have a subdivision in another town and actually, everybody fertilizes too much. And the detention ponds are the same thing, um, you know, the runoff goes to the ponds and they get, they. The the, it's loaded up with nitrogen and phosphorus and it's not, it's not good, so.
I have a big.
I think the terminology, we we can definitely reach out to the landscape architect, but I I think the common term is low phosphorus, I believe, but. Well, but.
And I I think I'm okay with that, as as long as there's a definition for it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah, we can get it to, and certainly a condition, I I already said I'd do it anyways, low.
And you can also grow.
I also said I wanted to look, look right to.
What I refer to in my ad as freedom grass, it gets no fertilizer, it gets cut.
Yeah.
That's it.
So Katrina, can you reach out to CONCOM and then, um, I can't, I can't think of who the, uh, I I think the idea of reaching out to the. The, you know, the professional CONCOM uses that we had, I can't think of his name.
Art.
Adam.
Thank you, maybe, you know, he may have some.
In contact with your landscape.
Yeah, 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 absolutely, no problem, yeah.
Are you gonna allow dogs?
Uh, yes, yeah.
You'll get as much nitrogen as you.
Yeah, and ammonia, that's, ammonia's a nitrate.
Yeah, exactly.
Alright, so, uh, we're gonna seek input from, uh, CONCOM and others.
Yeah, just, by the way, I I wasn't aware of this, um, until today, but there's actually a state law that was passed in twenty nineteen that. Um, restricts the amount of phosphorus and fertilizers in Massachusetts for lawns. Um, and it's, you're, you already cannot use phosphorus in your fertilizer unless. It it's for newly established lawn, which is what I put in the, in this condition, or a soil test indicates that additional phosphorus is needed. For the growth of the lawn, um, so, I mean, we we could just fall back on that, if it's it. It it, that that applies to lawns and nothing else, I don't know what other kinda landscaping is gonna need phosphorus fertilizer here, if it's not, if it's more than lawns and. Then we can apply maybe that same standard, but it it's possible we can just, you know, cite to that section of the of the new, of the of that new statute. And deal with it that way.
I don't, I don't have a problem if that's what the law says, so.
Yeah, let's see what, let's see what the other agencies in town have to say, see if we get any input from them and then, um, yeah, that could be another alternative.
Okay. So, um, on D eight, do we have anything from the fire chief, I I was there a, I I don't think I've seen a an email or a letter from the fire chief. Just signing off on the, on the site plan, on the, on the layout and the configuration of the driveways and the buildings, did we ever get anything like that?
We've had multiple correspondences from the fire chief.
But I don't know if I've gotten, I don't know if I've been CC'd on them, all, I can look through my emails. I think the only thing I know I remember getting was the correspondence about the chair.
Okay, yeah, these kinda span over probably several months, so.
Yeah.
We can do the same, we can check emails and just.
Yeah.
It would be better, it would be better for the fire chief to address the zoning board directly, um.
Alright, so I.
You know, they're saying, it it, I have no concerns with, and 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 specifically, make making sure that the fire chief understands, we're asking for. His his sign off on the, on the design of the driveways and parking areas in the buildings for. You know, assessability purposes primarily, um, so it'd be good if that could come from the fire department directly to the zoning board.
Today?
Yeah. So, and what was the next sentence?
So, so we definitely had communication from the fire department, um, outlining some issues, right?
Yeah.
We definitely had that at the beginning, and I think what we need to have is something from them following up saying all their concerns were addressed.
Uh, what was the memo, was it the last sentence of the memo said they had no issues with any uh, uh, plans that were originally submitted, wasn't it, or something like that?
Yeah.
Did I get that right or wrong?
To be honest, I I I I think you're right.
Yeah, I think you're right too.
So this one here, yeah, that's from way at the beginning. Yeah, you see, I I think I've got that that memo printed out, but it's in the other folder for the other.
Did it come from Eric?
Captain Kuyan, Kailene.
Oh, it came from Mike.
Yep.
But, no, I think it actually came from Clay.
What was, it was.
I don't.
Yeah, I think Clay.
The most recent one that said, you know, with regard to the chairs, you know, we accept the offer, but since we don't, um.
Right.
Recede EMS, you know, we effectively decline and we accept the plans as submitted for the project.
Yeah, that one I do have.
Okay.
Yep, that's what I'm reading right here to you.
Is is there another one that that signs off on the whole project?
So, are you looking at that now, Steve?
Yeah, I mean.
What's the last sentence say?
There, there seems to be no feasible way around this issue. The department will accept the original plans as is, in reference to the comment of of the below grade residents access to street level.
Oh, alright, so you you limited to that one issue?
In in this email.
In that email, yeah.
But I know there's other emails, cuz we.
Yeah.
This plan specifically.
It would be good.
To their satisfaction.
I can reach out to Mike.
And and you guys can reach out to him as well.
Yeah, I think that's what happened, I think the spirit of how you phrase that, cuz we say, hey, the only outstanding issue we have is this. We we can follow up with them.
It it would be good to have a letter from him as Ganson.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, we can scroll down then.
Okay, hold on.
Alright, so D ten is a change that we made at the, at the last meeting. Um, during the berm and the landscaping improvements. Um. Snow storage, um, I I emailed with Jeff about this this afternoon, um, I mean, Jeff can speak to this if he'd like, but. It it seems like there's not much, it seems like it's adequate, except for really severe storms, in which case they're gonna have to take snow offsite, so.
Yeah, that's, that's how I see it, I mean, there was snow storage areas shown on our three plans. Nevertheless, you know, snowplow operators gonna find any place that doesn't have a walkway of landscaping and push snow when it's a big storm and worst comes to worst. You lose a few spots un- until it's hauled away, um, I forget if it was this project, the other project, I remember one of the two. The other being Misco Hill, I I remember hearing about, yeah, there may be times when the snow has to be hauled, but I. I can't conclusively say that, but I thought I heard such a discussion. I'm satisfied with the amount of snow storage.
Is it, is the board okay then with that issue?
Yeah, I think so, I mean, um. You know, I I I think, I think the bigger concern is that, um, they they push snow and and eat up parking spots, that could happen whether they have enough storage area or not. I could have all the storage area in the world and, you know, they could still block, uh, parking spots and block access and and I don't know. You know, what could be done about that, I I my, I guess my hope is that there's some sort of a fire code that would be able to be engaged, have, you know, somebody go in there and say, look, you know, you need to. Need to maintain access to the buildings.
Or complaints from, from residents.
Yeah, their tenants are gonna complain. The tenants are gonna complain, of course, but.
Yeah, I'm gonna get the call, we actually, we actually have a a a snow blower that's probably eat somebody's car here. Actually, on one of our sites, so, for for a similar situation, when we run into it, we move that machine over, but.
I, you know, I I I think we've done what we can as far as making sure there's snow storage space and, you know, if if they run out of space, they they've gotta do the right thing.
Yeah, and export it and stuff, yeah.
So I I'm okay with it.
Uh, then we can scroll down. I I just added a sentence, uh, on condition E twelve, E five, that the driveways shall always be private and not. Not ever be accepted in a public way in Crafton. We normally have that type of condition in the decision. Um, I also added this condition that we talked about last time regarding the parking garages. Um. So let me know if that works.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, I think the intent certainly is good, it's probably one of those things that would be tough to enforce, but.
I, I don't have, I don't have an issue with it.
Yeah.
It's well worded.
I'm, I'm good with it.
On section E eight, um, I added this, added the sentence concerning the parking that. You know, two, two spaces would be available per unit for the affordable units at no charge to the tenant. Um, I, I don't remember what this applicant was saying with respect to whether they're gonna charge for parking. But I, I, I know from experience that, that sometimes changes. A lot of times apartment owners start off by saying that parking is free, but then, then in year two or three, they start charging for it. So I, I think it's important that if parking is needed, which it is at this site, because there's no public transportation, that. That the affordable unit owners shouldn't have to, um, not be eligible to buy parking. Uh, just because they're the affordable unit owners. They, they may be, the developer may be required to subsidize it or, or provide for free under the state regulations, I'm not sure, but. Um, it seemed like it was a pretty important thing to, to address.
I, I think that makes sense. We're not saying you have to have assigned spots, it just has to be two spots made available. And no charge, I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, yeah, we don't charge, so you can leave it in there, so that's, that's fine.
Yep.
A garage is a, a garage is a different story, parking spot, obviously, it's.
Yeah.
We don't charge.
Alright, so I, I had a placeholder for a condition on the, on that chair, the stair chair thing, but. That, that's no longer an issue, so I'm taking that out.
So, we, we just, um, went by F three, um. And I guess I had, I'm, I'm sure I've noticed this before, we've forgotten about it. So no vehicle longer than eighteen feet shall be permitted to park on the project site. So, um. Well, I, I, I guess that's it. Alright, nevermind, I'm, I'm good.
How, how long is a regular Chevy pickup?
Yeah, they're getting long, but I.
Yeah.
But you got a full length bed, that's a different story.
You gotta be twenty feet anyways.
They could probably overhang the curb, you know.
I mean, I not realize this is, they don't want any, uh. Joe's Glass Company vans in there or trucks.
Yeah, doing a repair, yeah, no, I, I, we don't want really commercial vehicles in there, even if.
Packing all night.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Actually, should this say overnight?
Yeah, actually, I just, I was just thinking of.
Right.
So you can't even have work trucks during the day?
So, so, so.
Yeah.
Amazon can't go in.
They can't park, so they have to.
They do anyway.
Alright, I'm sorry.
Alright, so. Where are we, I?
Yeah, I, we're on page twenty one.
Okay, um. So I added, I, I actually added some language as I was typing here on my computer that. The stormwater management design shall be modified to make the roof drain pipes in the rear of buildings three hundred and four hundred perforated. As opposed to solid or closed pipes to allow for direct infiltration during small storms before runoff is conveyed to the infiltration basins.
Is that, is that like I seven?
I actually made it I six, um, to keep it with the stormwater conditions. And then I six becomes I seven, dealing with sewer. And we have now a memo from the sewer department that there's adequate, adequate capacity, so that there's no need for a condition on that. That note can be taken out. Alright, so now we're on J one, um. I added that sentence, um. Just clarifying what we're asking for for the crosswalk. The sign is actually identified very clearly on that plan, the traffic plan. So that's that, and then for offsite, uh, for the next section, J two. You know, all work is to be performed as shown on that traffic plan, which again is, is a really nice plan that. Details everything, including the sign specs that are, that are required. And then I just, I just tweaked the language of, uh, of each, each one of these subcategories, these subprojects under, under J two. But really, that plan is, is the, is the operative, um. You know, source of regulation there. That's, that's what the developer has to comply with.
On, uh, number five, Pollard Road and Pleasant, who designed it?
I think Steve already asked.
You already have?
Yep, part of that plan set.
Yep, we saw a drawing.
Has, uh, has, uh, DPW okayed it? He okay, okay.
Yeah, please DPW and Bill was representing the ZBA at a meeting and then I sent out an email confirming and we got responses.
And then J five is the, um, the monetary, uh, mitigation. This was negotiated with the select board. So, that's pretty simple, you, they, they have to pay twenty five thousand per building. At the time of each building's first occupancy permit. And then I think we get into waivers.
Just out of curiosity, I just, on, on J five, um, with a, with a multifamily apartment, like this is, is, is the occupancy permits done per unit?
No.
For the whole building?
The whole building.
I think the language is still fine, I just wanted to know for my own. Okay.
Yeah, just in case there's ever.
Right, yep.
Block the whole building.
Yep, understood.
Dan, is there language in here about sureties?
Oh, yeah, that was just our standard language from the prior decisions, uh, we didn't make any changes to that, it's, um.
H, page nineteen?
H.
If I may, with respect to surety, I thought there was a memo from the conservation agent or the commission. Recommended, um, project surety with respect to stabilization. It's, I, I don't remember the language and, you know, it was probably for both of these, this and the Misco Hills project. I'm not sure if that was covered on the H one or H one A.
H two, Ellen.
Yeah, I think it's there, is it on H two, Jeff?
Oh, thank you.
And that was, and Jeff's right, that was something the conservation didn't wanna have an overlap or redundancy on and they, that's why I actually sent the memo. So that it would be covered by the ZBA.
Yep.
Can we tweak the language in? H two to require some kind of. I don't know, sign off or something? That the bond's been. Received, or the tri-party agreement's been executed. Cause I know we.
They're not allowed to clear until I get it.
Oh, really? Didn't we have this problem at Fisherville?
We did.
Okay, I, I think, so I think that's where Brian.
I, I get, yeah. I mean, we didn't have a problem with them before, but I see what you're saying, yes, cause Fisherville did not give us the bond until they did clear.
Probably due at the construction, you know, kickoff meeting, uh, cause we'll have to have Jeff go over and, uh, witness the. Limited clearing and all that other stuff as well, so we'll post a bond at the same time. He'll come, come up with a cost to, for the disturbance like we did at, uh, Elmark, so. And definitely not something that has to be presented at a meeting or anything, but just some, I don't know, some mechanism in here to. Give the green light. That it's been approved or received.
So, uh, y- you know, um, this language, I think, should be sufficient, right? So what happened was the building department didn't. Didn't make sure that this happened. And I'm wondering if we insert ourselves into that part of the process. How does that, how does that prevent it from still being bypassed? In other words, the applicant just went and did what he wanted to do. We're, we're in no better position to stop them than, than, than the building department was. You, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I hear it.
Yeah, cause they can start clearing without letting us know.
The way this is drafted though, it's, um, it's actually before the zoning board gives its final approval of the plans, which I think you generally defer to, to Jeff on that anyway. But at least there is that check that before we sign off on the final approved plans, you know, we can ask for the, making, making sure the surety's in place.
Yeah, you're, you're right. In, in, in this language, was that Fisherville as well?
Um, I'm not sure. Fisherville is ten years ago, so I don't, I don't know if, it, what was in there, but this is what we've used in, this, this is from Prentice, I think. Um, and I'm pretty sure we've used it in prior projects. But as I'm looking at it, something else has come up and I just realized, you know, we, I think it's important for us to stipulate that the tri-party agreement has to be. In the, in the same form, uh, that we use, the, the, the zoning board standard form. And, and that the agreement should be subject to approval from town council. Uh, we, we've had that, we actually had that issue. I think with Fisherville.
Yeah, they, they went and got something totally different.
Yeah, they proposed a form that was really weak, so.
Yeah.
I, I, I'd like to add just a little bit of language there.
No, I, I think that makes sense. And so in prior to ZBA's review of the final plans, the applicant posted bond or tri-party, so somehow we need to, I mean. I think we've already got the check that you're asking for, Brian.
Yeah.
You know, we need to make sure we do our job.
Cause you guys have to sign the final MyLars that they have to submit to the registry, so maybe before.
This, this isn't a subdivision, do, does that happen?
You still have to sign the MyLars.
It's tricky, cause I, I was concerned when you said that, but then when I went back and looked at the Fisherville plans. Not every sheet in the set was recorded, every sheet was signed, but the layout and material, um, plans in the plan set.
Yeah.
Were recorded through registry of deeds.
Okay, but everyone was signed, huh?
And Prentice.
Every sheet was signed on MyLar.
And Prentice, same thing on Prentice. Cause I remember I had, I had them laid out, cause then Candy has to sign them. The town clerk then has to sign them, so.
Alright, alright. You think I'd remember, but okay.
Yeah, it's been a while. It's tricky when you don't record, or when you, when you're asked to record non-subdivision plans or non-eighty-one P or eighty-one X, you know. Survey related, but, uh, yeah, we, we kind of anticipate it now and. Like I said, it won't, you know, they're not gonna record the detail sheets, it's gonna be probably a couple of important sheets that show property lines, building locations, parking layout. So that there's a record of what.
That and the, and the copy of the comprehensive part that you should get put together.
Yep, yep, exactly.
So, um, Dan, you're gonna add some language to H two to, um, to kind of beef that up and, and, um. Essentially get, I guess, your input, um, at that point. Um, I, I s- I assume you looked at some of the history at Fisherville, I thought there was another issue, but maybe it was. This exact issue of, of them doing, um, site work. I, I thought there was another issue that was, we, 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 we felt, next time we do a permit, we need to make sure we address it.
Well, wait a minute though. H three. Is the final as. Built for the final sort of.
But that's the afterwards, af- after everything's done.
Yeah.
That's the finalized.
Well, I thought that's what you were saying that was in there, um.
Like, that's not missing yet, I'd like to see a provision for a release of that, um, agreement.
No, we don't do.
I'm getting more trouble.
Yeah, I mean, I already, yeah, I, I had that in my notes, there's, there's no mechanism for any type of release, even, although. I think we kind of came up with one and I think we just have to memorialize it, whatever we did for Providence.
The agreement itself has language that governs how it's released. We, we have a standard form that we use.
Alright, so where, where are we up to now?
Waivers, page twenty, twenty-five.
So I, I, um, I tried to capture all the decisions that we've made, uh, over the last two meetings. Uh, in that, for, uh, in the far right column. There were a couple that we took off as we scroll down, so if you wanted to scroll down, Katrina.
Can we, can we bring up, uh, waiver number two?
So, uh, if I may, um, through the chair, this mirrors the discussions we had for Misco Hills. When we spoke with the architect, um, the actual building height from the slab up would be thirty-six feet. He requested that we ask for another foot for the difference between the finished elevation and the top of the slab, just for the footing. So it would be a, a two-foot waiver from the thirty-five number.
So that's thirty-five in the front, thirty-seven in the front, but forty-seven in the back because in the walkout scenario. In this case, building's three hundred and four hundred, so it's, it's just a slight adjustment from the forty-five to forty-seven. Or essentially thirty-five.
So I think what you're saying here is, is, is in this number two, change. Um, the forty-five to forty-seven and the thirty-five to thirty-seven.
Yes, correct.
Yep.
It's a little, just a little factor of safety, that, you know, the actual height, it's thirty-six, but. Yeah, Bob, Bob's thorough, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna, uh, get caught on that one.
Based on the grading of that lot, are the, the back two buildings lower than the front two buildings? You know what I'm saying?
Yes, uh, two feet lower. The finished floor elevation is, of these two buildings is the same. And they're two feet lower than those two buildings, which is, those two are the same and these are two feet lower and the, and those are the same.
So even with the additional. Elevation, it's still, it's still, those front two buildings are still higher than.
They'd be the st- worst case, they'd be the same, right?
No, the, oh, the total height.
He's just saying relative to the other building, because of the ground elevation change.
Yeah, now it occurs to me. Okay, why is the front of buildings three and four thirty-seven, but buildings one and two is not thirty-seven?
Well, I think that probably needs to be.
They would be, building one hundred and two hundred would be thirty-seven all the way around, because it's a flat.
Yeah.
And a flat part of the site, right, so that.
Okay, so, so actually this waiver needs to be enhanced to include buildings.
One hundred and two hundred.
One hundred and two hundred at thirty-seven.
Correct.
Okay.
Thanks for thinking of that.
That all covers the, uh, the fake roof.
Right, exactly.
Dan, you got that?
Yeah, let me, I'm just thinking how to word it, um. Alright, I got it. So, so the nu- the new language will say, a- allowed, but only for buildings three hundred and four hundred. And only as measured from the rear of the buildings, uh, the height as measured from the front of the building, front of the buildings. Including, uh, buildings one hundred and two hundred. Actually, no, that's not right, because it's, it's the entire building for those, um.
I, I think it's something along the lines of it's allowed, thirty-seven is allowed across the board. And then for three hundred and four. And then for three hundred and four hundred, the rear of the building is forty-seven. Something like that.
Yeah, okay, maybe, maybe I'll start with the first sentence that, um, all buildings may have a height of up to thirty-seven feet. Buildings three hundred and four hundred can have a height in the rear up to forty-seven.
Yep.
And thirty-seven.
Yep.
Okay.
Something like that, okay.
Yep.
So I, I just wanna make a note, um, I want um, the opportunity to review these on, on my own, um, just to match them up to the notes I have, so, um, you know, I, I may communicate. I, I guess maybe just send something to Dan or whatever, if I think I, I've seen anything that we talked about and didn't get, I just, you know, because, cause like everyone else, I just got these tonight. So Dan, we, do we include, you know, we're uh, electric signs and this one says denied? Should, should that just be removed, or?
We can, if you'd like, it's, that's up to you, up to the applicant, I mean, if, if he wants to withdraw it, he can just take it out.
Yeah, we're happy to withdraw.
Okay.
But the, does this still cover a backlit sign?
This hurts my head. I'll, I'll bet. I'll bet my notes from the other project have, uh, have better notes.
Maybe Katrina needs to ask Bob. What's an electric sign?
He's brutal on signs.
Why can't I find this at all?
It was probably right on the same one of.
Alright, do you wanna take that out?
Do you want me to ask Bob about it? It's up to you guys.
I mean, leaving it in has.
With the applicant, what is your intention?
Uh, I thi- I, I don't think I'm gonna do a backlit, I think I'm just gonna do uh, like, like ground landscape lights shining up, you know, just low, you know?
Okay, the only thing I'm gonna say about that is, has anybody bothered to drive by Tufts at night when they have their light shining up on one of their signs? It's pointed in such a way, when you drive down that road, that light blinds you.
Oh, it's pointing at you?
It's horrendous, so I, that's all I'm gonna say, only because depending the type of light it is and the way it's pointed. And that, and.
So it's, it's been a while since I've read the sign by law, and I know we've tweaked it, but I thought there used to be language that said lighting cannot interfere with, with, with uh.
Yeah, I, I, I know.
So I, I think, I think there's, there may be stuff already in the bylaw to address that.
Yeah.
I, I, I think somebody said, I don't know who said it, but I, I think maybe the answer is that, you know, the applicant wants to have a, a sign that's illuminated with some sort of ground lighting.
Yeah.
And then maybe we just go to Bob and say, what, what, is, is that allowed? And then if, if not, then what waiver is necessary?
Okay, I can ask Bob that.
Yeah, so I have the definition, and I think this is what prompted the request, because I don't think we knew the sign, but I probably know more about the sign, but the definition says, any sign which is internally illuminated by incandescent or fluorescent lamps, LEDs, electro luminescent material, luminous tubes or other means of converting electricity into light. Really all about internally lit, and I don't think we're even considering internally.
Jeff was saying that, I think the last meeting, yeah.
Yeah, you weren't here last week.
Yeah.
It might have been the other side.
The other engineer.
So what did we decide at last meeting, that, that no waiver at all was needed?
I don't know, I was so confused at half, whatever the discussion was.
I don't think we need a waiver, cause we're not doing it internally illuminated.
That was my take on it that night.
Did we take it out and say it would be a minor project change?
Yeah, oh, de minimis, I'll, I'll come back for a de minimis, de minimis or whatever.
Alright, so let's take it off.
Insubstantial change, yeah.
I'll also double check with Bobby.
Okay, yeah, that's great.
Well, it, it is very clear that Steve read the definition of an electric sign, and it's very clear to me that Chad does not want a sign that meets that definition.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just a matter of.
So the question is, does, is, does a sign that he wants to have, is that allowed?
Is that allowed, so I, I'll double check with.
I got, I gotta be honest with you, I hope it's not in a residential area. I, I hope that you can't have lit signs like that in a residential area, maybe you can.
Yeah, I.
So let's find out for Bob, and if you need something, let's get it in here now, or.
I wouldn't want a sign like that, but.
No, and if not, maybe a strategically located um, site lighting lamp post would illuminate a non-lit sign to the satisfaction of the developer.
Did we give a waiver for the size? We must have given a waiver for the size, right?
Size of the sign?
Yes.
No?
There's just construction.
You know, they could do something like that. But I'll, I'll.
Isn't in an arf- that's an arfarty zone, isn't it? Isn't it one by two?
It's pretty small.
Yeah.
You might wanna look at that, cause I, I think we did that.
I think I only have a sign that's big. I'm serious.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I think, you're right.
Probably check down on Mast D E P sign though.
Mast, who, no, no, that's, that's different.
That's construction face.
They can do anything they want.
No, I know there's something different for, for that, because if you drive down Providence Road, the sign they have for those new townhouses down there at two seventy-four Providence.
But that's a multifamily zone, isn't it?
No, that's village mixed use.
Okay, so that may be different.
That may be different, but I'll double, but I'll, I'll double check with Bob also on the sign size.
I believe it's one by two.
No, it is, and, you know, and, and isn't that one of the reasons the school, Millbear Street School came to us, because their sign is.
So, yeah.
It's too big. They didn't get, they didn't get their variants.
I mean, I know we gave, we gave the four by eight during construction, but.
Yeah, well, I'm sure Bob's gonna say, well, what am I gonna do, so let me try to figure out what I'm gonna do.
Yeah.
But I'll, I'll.
I'm not even too sure what, what I'm calling this place.
I think we did, I, I think we did at um, uh, Hankerani's at um, at High Point, I think we did, and, and maybe others, but.
You just gotta know your size, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, but, but the electric sign is, is not an issue, so that, we just remove it, and you may end up coming back to us, uh, with, with something more specific on a sign. Or we can, or we can deal with it as an insubstantial.
Yeah, you, that, that might be better at this point, I believe.
Okay. Alright.
You guys okay with thirteen?
Wait a minute, thirteen's talking about impervious area.
Yeah, but then there's something that, the revised plans about the roof runoff, so I don't know if you want me to stop there so you guys can discuss it.
Is, is that relevant to this section?
I believe it is, um, this is under the groundwater supply protection overlay, and oftentimes I've gotta look at site plans and for exactly what we talked about earlier tonight, how much volume runoff goes into the ground, because more than a certain percentage of the site is being rendered impervious within the water supply protection overlay district.
Okay, alright, that's probably, okay.
And, and to that point, I think under the, on the rightmost column, may wanna say something loud, uh, the revised plans now provide decentralized infiltration roof runoff by way of recharge assist chambers at building number one hundred and number two hundred, and by way of infiltrating, infiltrating drainage trench at building number three hundred and four hundred.
But isn't that on the plans dated August twenty-second?
Yep, or as shown on the plans.
Yeah, maybe that would be, you see, keep it simple. I mean, the re- re- and he says the revised plans, August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, not, not provided. That, that probably is good enough.
Agreed.
Okay.
The sign does say, uh, cannot exceed two square feet in any agricultural or residential district. That's not very big.
That's why I brought it up.
Don't laugh at you.
And it's better we cover it now than, than have to go through all these insubstantial changes, I mean, it's.
I mean, thinking ahead to the conclusion of this meeting is just, is it a, a size of a sign we wanna?
What sense were those letters, a foot?
They were, yeah, a foot tall. I'm not saying we have to handle it tonight, it just.
Yeah, we're not, we're not closing this tonight.
Yeah.
I don't think. Yeah, why, why don't you, why don't you, why don't you find out what you want, let's get it, you know, get it to Dan, and let's get it into a final, that, you know.
Okay, yeah, that, that makes sense.
Did I speak out of turn saying we're not closing this tonight?
We're up against the clock, I thought, thought that there was a likelihood we would, but, uh, you know, the.
What's, what, what's the clock sign? Besides nine sixteen P M?
Five days. October seventeenth.
Really?
Oh, forget the sign, one by two's good. We'll close it tonight, no big deal.
I mean, they can give, they can grant the extension to get that.
That's a good comeback.
Or we get a continuance. Yeah, um, but, let's, let's keep moving.
Okay, we're on stormwater, I, I, I think we are all set with that, right?
Yep.
And then that gets us into subdivision regs, um, and I don't have good notes on this, I'm not sure if we actually got into the, the um, weeds on these design issues, I, I think we're waiting to, to hear from Jeff as to some of the design standards, so.
Um, with respect to pavement width, I always thought of that as a linear type of project, not a parking lot type of project like this, linear being like a street or something, so I don't know if the wave applies. Um, there is discussion in the zoning bylaw about um, um, access wire, access way widths in parking areas, to me, that's more of a applicable regulation than the subdivision street width.
And that would cover the entrance?
Yeah, well, yeah, that, I, I believe that would cover the entrance as well, because it, it looks and, and works as a com- I don't wanna say commercial, but for lack of a better term, you know, a parking area, whether it's residential or commercial businesses or something like that, compared to a, a new street, a subdivision street.
So that may.
So.
We may need to change that on, up to the street.
That's just my thought, Dan, I don't know if, if you feel otherwise about um, section four point one, point four point two applying, but.
Yeah, I mean, uh, technically, none of these apply, um, because these are subdivision regulations and I, we, we've in the past I think just gone through this exercise mostly just as belt and suspenders, um, and you know, the, a- and we've asked for a comparison of the project with our, our, our road design standards, you know, just so we have a, a sense of how close it works to what we ordinarily would require, so I, I think it's a, I think it's a good exercise to allow or deny these waivers, uh, even if they're not technically applicable, um, and it gives the applicant some, I think some comfort knowing that, where we stand on, on the stuff too.
Okay, thank you, and I'm sorry, I was specific about number seventeen, but I do agree with that philosophy for number eighteen where it talks about centerline grade of the area, um, and number nineteen, the leveling area, those are important features even to this type of project, not just to subdivision streets, so.
So, I, you know, my notes from when we went through these are basically okay on all of them, which uh, in my mind should translate to allowed.
Yep.
Um, and then I just have a note on the protection of natural features. Wherever there will be clearing to occur is shown on the approved plan set, and I have her subject to staking and notice of limit. Of something I can't read.
Limit of clearing, probably, confirm limit of clearing would be my guess.
Yeah. But I, but I guess that basically translates to loud. Wherever there will allow clearing is shown on the approved plan set. So I, I, I guess that's, we're, we're good on it.
Yep.
Okay. So Dan, I mean, uh, are we, are, do you have specific concerns, or just you didn't have the, as good a notes, or?
Well, no, I, I didn't think we had Jeff's review of this yet, so that, that's why I looked blank.
Oh, I see, alright.
If that's the case, um, I'm fine with seventeen, I'm fine with eighteen. There's a four and a half percent grade, but it's not up against the uh, Pleasant Street, am I correct about that?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so I'm, what, number nineteen, the subdivision rules and regs call for a hundred feet measured from this right-of-way line of the um, of the existing street. Um, there's gonna be no more than three percent grade within that hundred feet, they're requesting, they do have a leveling area proximate to Pleasant Street, it's just that the grade exceeds three percent within that hundred feet, so that's why they were asking for a waiver. I don't have a problem with the waiver, because there is a leveling area there, consistent with my knowledge of Mast D O T recommendations for intersecting streets on a, on a minor street like this, and driveways on a minor street like this. And I'm comfortable with a four and a half percent away from Pleasant Street as well. Natural features we discussed, that's because um, the subdivision rules and regs call for, show me all the trees within the front yard of of uh, the front yard setbacks of the subdivision street, so again, it, the information was shown on the plan. Uh, number twenty-one.
Was that, was that the one where um, we had them staked for the, I know you sent an email that you staked the, between Peter's Way?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that what you wrote down there, Bill?
I, I was kinda wondering that same thing, Peter, as I was reading it, that, that was related to that or not, but I, I, it seems to me that it's more along, it's more that we wanna make sure the plan is indicating what's staked and, and, and essentially where the limits are, that's, I think that's what that's.
Yeah, because the plans show an existing tree line along the Peter's Way property, and then there's no work proposed over that tree line, except for where we uh, show the proposed tree line, because the existing tree line from the corner of the field goes this way through those buildings, so where we're proposed cutting and clearing, you know, back here but the existing tree line, there's a change in color of the line type on the plan, is, you know, here.
That's all staying?
That's all staying, yep, and I personally went to go look at the staking, and yeah, it's right along the existing tree canopy. And then you can follow the stakes back into the woods behind, at the, you know, beyond the edge of the field, and you can see where the limit of clearing is proposed in the woods.
Um, number twenty-one, utility location and so forth, um, they're talking about um, again, a linear street is what's called for in the subdivision rules and regs, and the utilities are supposed to be put in specific locations, whether it's a A, B, or C road, a twenty-two foot wide road, twenty-six foot wide road, a thirty-foot road, they're looking for a waiver, because it's a driveway type of environment with parking areas, that's fine.
Yep.
Lighting waiver to request, lighting shown. This talks about streetlights and specific locations for streetlights is, is number twenty-two, that's what the regulation is. They're looking for waiver to pu- sh- provide lighting as shown on the approved plan set. In set R three, not the, the, I went through the layout sheets, I went through the um, uh, the lighting sheets that show the intensity of illumination on the ground surface, uh, the, the lighting fixtures shown on the um, on that modeling plan does in fact meet the layout plan, so I'm good with the lighting. There's no um, overspray of lighting up, and not anywhere near a foot candle at the property lines. It might have hit point one, or point two, in a couple of locations, um, I'm comfortable with the lighting. Um, as shown on the approved plan, there is a streetlight, uh, I mean, a light post at the um, I don't know, is it a bus shelter or something up at the entrance?
Yeah.
So, I, I, I'm comfortable with the onsite lighting, and, and um, one other thing that, that with respect to lighting, um, there should be, in my opinion, given the number of vehicles that will enter and exit this site, um, a street light, if you will. at the intersection of the driveway and Pleasant Street, um, that was done, I know for Providence Commons, was found late in the game, but they were supposed to be there, but they weren't installed, um. I don't know if there's, there must be a such street light at Christopher Drive intersection, I just don't know if that's close enough, probably wouldn't do much good for the intersection of the driveway and Pleasant Street.
I, I thought we talked about this at the last meeting, and, and there was gonna be something on Pleasant, but it was me subject to select board or somebody.
If it's on Pleasant, but if it's on their property and they're paying for it, they can put it in probably, I don't think it needs town.
The, 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 the light at the bus shelter isn't bright enough or in the right location for the intersection illumination. It's, so, I, I, and, and it should be, you know, subject to approval by the select board, because it would be in the right of way. I, quite frankly, I see it as a pole mounted light on an existing utility pole, um, they don't even have to buy a lamp post for it, it's just a matter, and, and or underground wiring for that matter, if there is a street light, a utility pole close enough, that's commonly done. The important thing is to illuminate the, um, intersection if there's not any illumination nearby. Looking back to Providence Commons, I mean, there's, that was a dark section, Providence Road.
I think on Elm Rock, you put one right in the radius going in, didn't you?
Yeah, I believe so.
And there was a light post right across the street, now, if I would have been the streetlight person at the time, I would have said instead of a pole that the town would have to buy when somebody plows it down, put it on a telephone pole and they'll fix it. But.
I think.
I don't, I don't know, he, he doesn't.
I don't have the design for National Grid, but I think in the last meeting I said I'd try to get a, a street light out there by National Grid.
Perfect.
To do, yeah. That intersection definitely needs a light out there.
Yeah. And I just wanted to make sure that point wasn't overlooked.
Yeah.
The site lighting, I'm fine.
Yeah, so we're talking about waivers and I, I said this is, uh, site lighting, so, okay, yeah.
And perhaps the waiver could say, you know, a- approved, um, the lighting plan for the onsite lighting is, is approved and, and, um, the applicant shall provide a street light at the intersection of the driveway and, and, um, Providence, uh, Pleasant Street.
You wanna review that before they, I mean, do you wanna review what kind of design they're gonna propose, or?
I, no, Dan, it would, it should be subject to whatever the Board of Selectment has negotiated with National Grid, the electric utility company. Uh, the, I know that D P W went through a major effort a few years ago to standardize, uh, what they use for equipment because of their contract with National Grid, and it's just gonna fall into that. And it would be something in the right of way, hence, you know, I think, uh, once the developer installs it, it, it would end up being, um, the maintenance costs would be borne by the town.
So what, what kind of language can I point to then? I, I, I'm not familiar with that type of contract between National Grid and the, um, and the select board, is there, is there some kind of spec sheet or something, or?
Uh, I, I think I would use language that, um, the developer shall provide and install, uh, you, um, a street, a, a street light at the intersection of their driveway and Pleasant Street, um, in conformance with, um, Grafton Board of Selectment and Grafton D P W requirements, and leave it at that. Let them haggle out whether it's gonna be, they have a utility pole that they can mount one on, or that there is none nearby, and it would be more prudent to use a freestanding pole mounted light, again, that the developer would pay for and it would meet the mass, I mean, the town of Grafton specifications.
So, so right now, um, you know, waiver requested, um, as, as shown on the approved plan set, we, we wanna say approved, um, but then language it basically says they need to, they need to include a light at the intersection of the project in, in Pleasant Street, right?
Agreed.
Yeah, I got it.
Alright, okay, moving on. Plastic pipe in culverts, storm drains.
No problem at all.
Yep, okay.
Yep, uh, two feet of cover, that's also fine.
Okay.
A waiver to request the type in street light shown on the approved plan set, yep, that's fine. Um, waiver to request the s- street light shown on the approved plan, okay, yep, yep, again, because that's onsite equipment, that's not gonna be the maintenance, um, problem of the town, and that's it.
Alright. We could go back to the signs thing too, if we, if you'd like, uh, I, I, I think, I think a two by eight sign with either ground lighting or backlit lighting is okay, or something, or something like that.
So sixteen square feet?
Yeah, I think that's, that's, that's doable.
Only that big.
It's not gonna be, yet, I mean, the letters are not, you know, be near the entrance, the letters probably only be twelve inches tall, probably, most likely.
And what's considered a sign, if it's on a stone wall, is the sign only the letters?
Yeah, I know, I didn't wanna say that, mostly, I think I mentioned in one of the meetings, it was, I'd do a decorative, you know, like a retaining wall, and what we've been doing is we've been laser cutting rusted steel out for the letters and, and fonts, and we actually put them into the wall, so the wall, it's kinda pretty, it's just, you know, it's a rock retaining wall, but it has, you know, pretty letters that are on there, and I just do up, up lighting from there.
What'd you do at Elm Rock? Is there one?
Uh, I don't.
No.
Gone, you took it down. There's a boulder that was.
Yeah, I think it was a boulder, we might have, might have etched, maybe.
Yes, you do have the boulder that's etched.
Etched, I think.
What's the name of this?
No idea.
I don't know yet. So how many, you may mean less than eight feet?
Well, I was, I was saying more, though.
Yeah, I know, I'm just kidding, maybe it's got a really short name.
A.
A. Anyway, okay.
Alright, so, alright, but, um. Definitely getting tired of it, um, so which waiver was that, where'd that go? Alright, so, alright, well, why don't we?
No, it's a new one.
It's a new one, yeah.
It's a new one.
No, there was one in here about a electric sign.
Well, that's electric, what they want is a waiver for the size of the sign.
But that's what brought it up, basically, when we were talking about signs.
So, alright, so, I mean, we, we, we saw the vote on that, so can you get the section and, and language, et cetera, to Dan?
Yep.
To incorporate as a waiver?
Yep.
Alright, let's do that.
Now, do we do two by s- two by eight or sixteen square feet?
I, I think it would be better to do sixteen square feet.
Feet.
Yep.
Allows it to be flexible.
Yeah, that gives them some flexibility.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's not really big, so.
Nope.
Yeah, and I, I really don't want it big, but I think that's, that's perfect.
And this is a pretty robust sign by law, it even gives you direction on the calculation of the area.
What do you mean by that?
Allow me to read this.
Tells you everything, tells everything about how.
It's not width times height, I mean.
The area of a sign shall be the area of the smallest rectangle or circle within which the entire sign can fit. So if you have letters, it's really not, it's not the area of the letters, it's the box that fits around the letters, or.
No, I'm, I'm not familiar with it, it's not how you're saying it, yep.
Which do not contribute through shape, color, or otherwise to the sign's message, but including any separate surface, board, frame, or shape on or within which the sign is displayed.
Yep. So I think that would exclude the wall.
Yeah, yep, it seems to be, for signs, uh, that have components of which are painted or engraved on, or otherwise applied directly to a building or other structure, the sign area shall include any background of a different color, material, or appearance from the remainder of the wall or structure, and shall, in any event, enclose all letters, figures, or representations related to the sign.
Yep, okay.
So, I think by definition, you know, if you've got a stone wall and the letters, it'd be like the box that encompasses the letters.
Yeah, I agree, I think, I think that's how it's interpreted. Alright, so you guys will get Dan some language there.
Yeah, and the height of the sign is measured to the highest point of the sign, so if the sign is the letters, it'd be from the ground to the letters. So we might wanna make sure two is, two feet's adequate. I'm sorry, that, that doesn't say the ground, it says the from the average ground level above which the sign is located.
Weird, it's not really a sign, but it's kind of a sign.
And they have some illustrations to help, really, help me walk.
Yeah, they acknowledge that it's confusing, that's, and it's good that illustrations are.
Alright, so what, what else do we have to do? I guess I'm talking to you, Dan.
Yeah, I, I think I just need to, uh, pre- prepare a revised draft of the decision, um, I need to add the findings to the decision. We'll modify these conditions as discussed tonight, um, that, that's it for me, I think we're gonna see if we can get a letter from the fire chief filed, um, signing off on the, on the design of the project.
Can we accept, if, if we close the public hearing, can we accept that input from the fire chief?
I mean, technically, you're not supposed to, but I think, you, you know, we, we, I've seen boards do an exception, we're closing the public hearing except to receive correspondence from the fire chief, of course, if the fire chief comes back and says something that is a problem, you'd have to reopen the hearing, um, but it's up to you.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's true, yeah, you could read it.
Why don't, why don't we do this, um, uh, I, I think there's been some hesitancy to give us an extension, but I, I think you can see that we're pretty much at the end game here, so what do we, I don't know how much time you need, Dan, but let's just say it's four weeks, or whatever, whatever the number is, two weeks, why don't we, how about we get an extension for a couple of weeks? On, on, uh, and, and we just wait and close it when we get together the next time we close it, and, and hopefully we have a final decision at that point that we can actually vote on. Chad, you want to say something?
He's sorry, yeah, I was just going back to the fire, because we have.
So that email that I sent you, which was dated September twentieth, one of the lines in there, you know, I basically said, as promised, we investigated the possibility of a paved walkway, blah, 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 wouldn't meet A D A, you know, we are offering to the motorized stair chairs, if you find this satisfactory, would you please confirm by replying to this email that your comments on the proposed project at fifty-nine Pleasant Street have been addressed? And then we understand that there are more specific building items, like sprinkler systems and that sort of thing, that you will be asked to review as part of the building permit review process, but those are not part of the comprehensive permit review by the zoning board of appeals. I guess that was the, you know, intent behind the latest email from Captain Kylene with the Graffin Fire Department.
So, I, I think I would feel better if, if we had something, we're, we're kinda trying to piece something together here, right, and public safety is one of those things that's important, I, I would feel better if we had something a little more explicit. Right, and, um, you know, I, I, I think we're there, I think you're there. Uh, it may be a little bit of a challenge just to get the ch- chief to write a letter, but I think we're in better shape now than we were.
That's what I was worried about.
Right.
Well.
I can reach out to Mike, he's off on Fridays.
But I, I thi- I think we're better off now, you know, and I don't mean this in any negative way to, to the former chief, but I, we have a full-time paid chief now, I, I think, I think that these things happen better now. Um, so I, I would feel better.
I actually think it'd be best if it came from Katrina, not to give her work to do, but I think, you know, exactly, you know, just please provide the Z E B A, you're blessing on this.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Mike, he's off tomorrow.
Yeah.
So I'll get it to him for Monday.
Yeah.
Dan, how much time do you think you need to put this together?
I, I think it's very minimal, it's more getting the other documents we need from other people, so, I mean, we need the sign details, we need the fire chief's letter. Um, are you gonna run the phosphorus thing by somebody, like Hong Kong or border health?
I'm gonna run it by Leah.
So, you know, I don't need more than a week, um, it, it's really just minor, minor changes. But, you know.
So we, we currently have a meeting scheduled for the ninth?
The ninth.
For, for Optin, right?
And that's probably gonna be, well, that's, I think that was gonna be the draft decision, so do you wanna?
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I don't, I don't wanna, I, I.
I mean.
So, you know, what if we were issued for the twenty-sixth?
I was just gonna say.
Everyone available twenty-sixth of October?
Two weeks, two weeks from tonight.
Oh. Actually, wait, better check, make, make sure I'm available.
I'm, I'm actually not available that, that Thursday.
I'm not either.
Wednesday?
I could.
What about Wednesday, the twenty-fifth? Yep, that works for me.
That works.
Yeah.
Alright, so what if we issued for the twenty-fifth? I'd like to keep the hearing, I'd like to be able to keep the hearing open until October twenty-fifth. I think we have a, a, a consensus that we would have a final decision, and, and we should be able to vote on a final decision on the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth?
Twenty-five, Wednesday.
Wednesday. No, I can't.
Oh.
No, I can't. It's next weekend.
I was gonna say, you said you were gone the week before.
No, I'm fine, the, the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Sixteenth, I'm bad.
Right.
Okay, um, you know, obviously, we're missing our two alternates right now, but all five of us, we've been at all of the meetings, or signed a mulligan or whatever it's called.
Mm-hmm.
Mulligan.
Golf on the brain.
Then mulligan, oh.
So we're all good, these five, so. How does that sound? Um, and I don't know what we need, Dan, to have, you know, if we don't close this, I guess we need to close it in seven days, but so we're gonna need some sort of an extension, and I don't know how we, is there something we need to have from the applicant to do that, or?
Yeah, we, we, we would need an extension tonight to extend the hundred, a hundred and eighty day deadline to October twenty-fifth.
Oh, that's a.
That'd be a little bit different than a continuance.
You know what, I have one, if you just wanna bear with me one second.
Okay.
Because we had to do that on somebody else.
You, you're okay with that, we're, we're ahead of you?
I'm alright with that.
Yeah, okay, and this way, this way it gives us the opportunity to get something.
Fine, absolutely, yeah, there, there's a few typos of things we can clear, clear out with Dan anyways.
Yep.
So we're going, Bill, with the twenty-fifth, Wednesday?
That's what we're heading for.
Okay.
Any idea would be final decision, close hearing, vote.
Wrap it up?
Yeah, there's no forty day, I mean, that, that, it's inclusive of the forty days, you know, statutorily to, yeah, so it'll just be done.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if something happens, we, we could, but. Steve, when, when, when do we have to close it by? If we don't do an extension?
According to our calendar, the seventeenth, that'd be five days.
That'd be Tuesday.
And Peter's out all next week, he's not available.
Alright.
Yeah, we're, we're okay with these things.
Well, he doesn't have to be here, we, you know, we had a reconvene to close it on the seventeenth, but, um. Do you think you have something?
I'm pulling it up right now, just taking a minute.
Okay.
You gotta always handwrite something too.
I've done it before, because we had to do it, I wanna stay on.
Yeah, I've got a form too, could you maybe find one?
Nope, that's this, that's the same one. I know I had one, that's what I'm trying to find, because I know we had it.
You have, if you have one handy.
Yeah, if you have one handy, you can email it to me.
Yeah, it'll take a few minutes, but I can find one, I, I'm sure I've done this before somewhere, so.
It's a race. I'm starting handwriting, man.
Putting a lot of pressure on me, Dan.
So a few moments ago, I, I thought I heard there was like about four action items, but I can only write down three, can we cover those, just so we're all.
Absolutely, because I don't have enough of them written down.
Fire chief, letter?
Yep.
Sign, size, dimensions, and an ultimate waiver?
Yep.
And then nitrogen phosphorus details on fertilizer?
Yep.
And I don't have a fourth, but I believe there.
I O L letter.
Yep, we can write that down.
Yep.
Not one I was thinking of, but maybe there's five.
I'm thinking the same thing.
Drainage? The pipe?
I think the condition covers it, and then we'll issue final, final, final plans on mylar prior to construction.
Yep.
And kinda detail that.
Was it something about streetlights?
It's gonna be in the decision.
Um. Was there anything with the whole surety discussion, I mean, there's, you know, new language, you know, there's language in a bunch of places in the decision, but I don't think that was necessarily anything on you guys. Let me just go flip through this.
Just receiving the bond prior to clearing.
I have it. I know I had it in here, so, we want.
Do you need one, Katrina, or do you have one?
I have one. I'm printing it right now, let me just go grab, oh, I'm going to change it because it has, well. Bill is acting chair on this, right?
Yeah.
Steve, your action items? Maybe to talk to your landscape architect about fertilizers?
Actually, maybe, no, any outcome from that, I'll make sure the landscape plan, because it does have a notation about fertilizer on the landscape plan. Dan, what do you have for, for action items?
I, I think I just had what you had. I can run through the conditions one more time, but I think you covered it.
So how many day extension are we doing?
I don't know if you picked it up.
25.
Eight. Well, if we're supposed to close on the 17th.
It'd be 20, it'd be eight days.
Eight days.
Eight, two.
Just put the 25th on it, so there's no question.
Yeah.
Mr. Peter.
Would you ever consider comments?
Yeah. We haven't had any cases come in, have we? Like, oh, we're doing this 40Bs. No, regular.
Did you want some?
I, I mean, really? Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, sure. I'm surprised we haven't had any.
Yeah, it is, it is a little surprising.
It is quiet.
I'm kind of, kind of glad we, you know, especially we, we got two going at once here.
Yeah.
And with that shed, by law, passing, you'll have even less.
I, I know. Okay. You guys, right now we're calling it the Reserve of Private Commons from 10/17/23, when it was supposed to end, to 10/25/23. So if you sign it, that's the date, and then I'll have Bill sign it.
Okay, all right, well, I'll wait for you. Had anyone joined the meeting, did you notice?
Ed Christie was in it, she left, and then one of the planning board members was in it, watching it, but nobody raised hands or asked questions. I kept checking while I was sharing the screen.
Then I'll entertain a motion to continue case number?
892.
892 to October 25th at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. I guess we do a roll call vote. Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Yeoman's, chairman votes, our vice chairman votes yes. All right, so we'll see you guys Wednesday, the 25th, 7:00 PM. I think we have a good understanding what we need to do to wrap this up.
Yep.
And I'll send those emails out Monday.
Excellent.
Very much. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, guys.
Yep, thank you. Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I trust you do not need me that night?
Probably not.
Okay.
I think it'll be good, yeah.
If it changes, let me know.
Absolutely. Yep. All right, Brian, it's your meeting.
All right, so the only thing we have left is the minutes from October 5th.
I've got pictures, do you have an iPhone?
Yeah.
I can just pass the pictures.
Does anyone have changes?
Um, I, I sent changes in.
No, you attached something totally different, it was not. I don't know what it was.
Oh, just on.
Why send it back to you? I don't know. It was something about hospital nursing.
Oh, God, it's my wife's doctor at work.
I was like, I'm hip, I was supposed to get this. HIPAA.
No, no, no.
No, no, there was nothing in there about that.
Katrina, on the second page, Bill picked it up, about the eighth word in Mr. Peter.
Mr. Peter.
I kind of like it, actually.
Okay.
And I was only gone 22 minutes, so.
Yes, you were.
That's all I have to watch. Oh, what was it, 18, wait a minute.
Yeah, you left at 7:06 and you came back at 7:29.
So, um, I, I don't know why, I just, I think one of the, that is, near the topic is the vice chairman takes control of the meeting. I, I would just slip that underneath the case 898. So case 898, I would make that vice chairman thing be the first thing under.
Just give me a number when you find them, you can check them.
So I know that was one of the things I'd written.
Keep these, so I'm going to watch of that thing too. That's why I came back, so I didn't have to watch all of them.
That's only going to mean a small bowl of popcorn, Peter.
I hate to say it, I'll probably have to come down and have Katrina put it on.
All right, and then.
She can cook the popcorn.
So then, then the other change that I had was, at the end, plans are still not finished. Once Mr. Reardon reviews the revised plans and approves them, then Mr. McCusker will allow them to begin. I don't, I don't want to say that.
Okay.
I want to say.
It's awkward. It's awkward the way it's.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, and I wasn't really sure.
Then Mr. McCusker will consider.
We're still in meeting, Mr. Yeoman's?
Yeah, Bill.
I was.
Good night.
I was just giving some theory encouragement.
So, um.
Good night.
I think what I'd written was something like, Mr. McCusker will consider approval or something like that.
Okay.
Because that's, I mean, that's, that's.
Yep.
Did you take care of that one?
Something, so, yeah, consider approval or something like that.
Okay.
I probably had a couple of others, but those, those are the big ones.
Which one was I throwing?
I need a motion on the minutes?
I move, and we accept the minutes of October 20, October 5th as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Yeoman's?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes?
I move, we adjourn.
We don't need this one, right?
Motion of adjourn has been made.
Second. Second.
Seconded. Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Thanks, Jeff.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Yeoman's?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes for adjourn.